At this time, we're going to stand and have our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Dear God, we thank you for providing us this opportunity and space to gather on behalf of all of Richland two. We thank you for providing us such a supportive and thoughtful school board and executive staff. Continue to give them courage and wisdom to make the decisions that will move us forward as a district. Amen.
School Board members and executive staff, Sergeant Major Hallbrook couldn't be with us tonight, but we do have him leading us in the pledge via the video. He's a parent here and also a husband to one of our employees.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I thank you, our principal, Dr. Hallbrook. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the current agenda and minutes from our previous meeting.
Second.
Moved by Inspector, second by Mr. Manning. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes six zero. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll have special recognitions by Dr. Broschu.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. We have a number of recognitions to be made this evening, and we're going to begin by asking Ms. Brill to begin with our first recognition.
I have a certificate of achievement, level four, for Chairman Chip Jackson. Congratulations. And you achieved that. That means he's been diligent about going to all of our training sessions and all of our meetings. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And also, a certificate of achievement for James Manning, who's achieved level three. Congratulations. Very proud of our board members who work diligently to stay informed on all the issues and all the meetings and all the new legislative initiatives that are happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brill.
Thank you. At this time, I'll call on our Executive Director for Communications and Strategic Partnerships, Mr. Ken Blackstone, to proceed with a number of recognitions this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Broschu, and Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. Tonight, we have several special recognitions, as noted. As I call folks forward to be recognized, I would like to tell you a little bit about each one of our honorees, and if faculty members or parents are here with our honorees, we would also ask that you would come up with them when their names are called. The first to be recognized is Davis Baruchy, a recent graduate from Richland Northeast High School. Over the summer, Davis was named a National Merit Scholar for Boston College by the National Merit Galactic Corporation. Davis was Richland Northeast Valedictorian and also received a perfect 2400 on the SAT. And I understand that you are leaving for Boston on Thursday. Best wishes to you. In July, Blythewood High School senior Jamie Kiefer earned second place in Business Communications at the Future Business Leaders of America's National Leadership Conference. She was the only student from the district to qualify for Nationals and one of six South Carolinians to place at the conference. And I believe Jamie is going to be joined by her parents and also the FBLA Advisor and Career and Technology Department Chair Christine Blackwelder. Is she here? And her Assistant Principal Kathy Trout is over here, I guess, taking pictures. Congratulations, Jamie.
Great job.
And next, we have six Richland two students who have, and recent alumni, who have earned the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout from the Boy Scouts of America. All six boys from Blythewood Troop 224 are listed on the PowerPoint slide. Only four are here with us tonight. They are Jake and Josh Baker, who I earlier referred to as the fabulous Baker Boys, and they were unfamiliar with that movie, so they didn't get that. Will and Casey Braddock are the other two, and we're glad that Casey was able to be here since he just received the Eagle Rank only last week. And I had the pleasure of attending the ceremony for the Baker Boys a few months ago, as their mother Laura Baker is one of our staff members, and she's here as well, along with her husband. So congratulations to all of you. And I would just quickly add that the three schools, the Center for Knowledge Clemson Road Child Development and Spring Valley High School benefited from the Boys Leadership Project. So congratulations again, and thank you for your service to the school district. Telling the Richland two story has earned Public Information Officer Dr. Teresa Riley and our Department of Communications and Strategic Partnerships a Golden Achievement Award from the National School Public Relations Association. And I'm going to ask if Laura would come take the picture, because it would seem appropriate that we do that for Dr. Riley and give her a break in taking the pictures for this particular one. A design team of district employees came together during the 2010-2011 school year to create the Richland two story, a project that is ongoing. We're trying to recruit our other staff members to come up to receive this recognition. We're also working the meeting, so it makes it a little bit difficult, but we're doing our best. So the district's 2011-2012 Back to School Handbook also won an award of merit from the national organization. And in May, you board members may recall that the communications team won 13 district-level awards from the South Carolina chapter of the same association, the National School Public Relations Association. So thank you very much. There is another one for Shelley Kriegsabre, who's our video producer for R2TV, also a member of our communications team, and that, her story on Kenyatta Jackson won an award of merit from the national organization. And Kenyatta is, if you're not familiar with the story, is a preschooler who doctors predicted at birth would never walk, but through the help of committed teachers and physical therapists, Kenyatta is walking, not only walking, but running and jumping and enjoying life. And by the way, this is one of our Richland two stories that was referenced earlier. And finally, tonight, I want to call up Spring Valley High School math teacher Matt Owens. Is Matt here? Here we are. And Matt is the recipient of the 2011 Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. Mr. Owens was one of 97 outstanding teachers to receive the honor and attend an awards ceremony with Vice President Biden in Washington, DC. And I know some of us here attended a reception recently in Matt's honor at his school to recognize this outstanding achievement. And thank you to Matt's parents for also being here with him. And we do have one final recognition, and for that, I'm going to turn it over to our board chairman, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blackstone. For the 25th consecutive year, the Richland two Finance Department has been awarded the Association of School Business Officials International Certificate of Excellence and the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate for Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The certificates are awarded annually to public school districts for complying with the highest financial reporting standards. The board would like to recognize the three chief financial officers who served in those 25 years and ask that they come forward as their names are called. The initial award was received under the leadership of Dr. Ray Rogers. Dr. Rogers, if you'd come forward at this time. Dr. Rogers served from 1957 to 1987. He was followed by Mr. Von Boozer, if you'd come forward, who served from 1974 to 1994. And our current Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Bob Davis, began his tenure in 1998 and is still with us, at least for a few more years. Today, Richland two is the only district in South Carolina with a AA bond rating from all three bond rating agencies, which we can credit to the fine leadership of these three individuals and their dedicated staff. Gentlemen, the board would like to thank you very much for your outstanding service.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board and faculty and friends of Richland School District two, I think I would be shirking my responsibility that if I didn't recognize groups of people that helped us get to where we are. And I'd like to begin with a slogan that was pinned to a cigarette commercial that says, "We've gone a long ways, baby." And we have. And some of those that are contributed would be five superintendents that I worked with while I was here. And in addition to that, we had people in the state legislature that assisted us, people at the county level, the county treasurer. Many times before we started doing things like TANs, Tax Anticipation Notes, we could get money on our signature without running into, without having difficulty with our cash flow. Those things were meant more to us than you can ever imagine. In addition to that, we, I cannot forget the, and I would be failing my responsibility if I didn't say Von Boozer and Marshall Neal. They stood through me thick and thin, and this award tonight would not be possible if it were not for all of those that I've mentioned. And we also had some mighty good auditors that were good to us. In fact, I don't know, we have always had so-called good record-keeping, and I don't think we ever received a major deficiency, but they helped us from receiving some major deficiencies. And it's just been a good ride for, to see that it's continuing after 25 years. I'd like to end with another slogan of pet milk, and I think the evidence of receiving this award tonight shows that we are better than we have to be. And I'd like to issue a challenge to Mr. Davis to keep us there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rogers. Thank you too, Von, very much. Dr. Broschu?
Yes, at this time, we'd like to call on Sumalet to share our student-focused presentation for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Broschu. We are in for a treat. We have tonight some very special guests here at North Springs. They're going to share a book of awesome that showcases what awesome, what is awesome about North Springs. And I have a young man whose dad led us in the pledge, Marco Hallbrook. If you'll come forward, please.
Welcome, Richland two school board members, executive staff members, and visitors. My name is Marco Hallbrook. I'm a fifth grade STEM student at North Springs. We are glad you are here tonight. We believe North Springs Elementary is awesome for so many reasons. We want to share a few of them with you as the 2012-2013 chapter of our story begins.
North Springs is awesome because...
North Springs is awesome because all of the teachers here collaborate across their grade levels as well as intergrade levels, so at any given time, you might see a first and a fifth grade class collaborating on a lesson together.
North Springs is awesome because we have faculty and staff that truly care about the students here, and as a result, the students participate, they're engaged, they love coming to school. My second grader can't wait to get here every day, and I couldn't be more pleased with what we have here at North Springs. Go Crickets!
North Springs is awesome because the school has good education and the school has a great environment for the students and me.
North Springs is awesome because the teachers keep us safe.
North Springs is awesome because it's a nice and clean school.
North Springs is awesome because of all the cricket, all the festivals, like Cricket Fest.
North Springs is awesome because the teachers are very nice, like Ms. Powell. North Springs is awesome because they have nice teachers.
They love me.
North Springs is awesome because the staff is very dynamic, and not only are they dynamic, they love to work together, and that's why I like North Springs.
North Springs is awesome because the staff, faculty, parents, and students are very supportive to the interns.
North Springs is awesome because the faculty and staff really work well with the interns.
North Springs is awesome because everyone's really welcoming, and I feel like we are part of the family.
North Springs is awesome because they love their interns.
North Springs is awesome because we have great students who love to see us every day.
North Springs is awesome because the faculty and staff really work cooperatively with each other, and it's a great environment.
North Springs is awesome!
Because when you're learning, you're having fun!
North Springs is awesome because my kids love to come to school every day, and there's lots of great opportunities for parents to be involved in the school.
North Springs is awesome because good friends, great teachers, very good education, great field trips, helps you get smarter every day, great encyclopedias, good healthy meals, fun celebrations, learn more, play lots of things, learn everything, good principals, safe and protected, safe environment.
North Springs is awesome because when it's November, you can go on bouncy houses, do games, and get to dunk your principal in the dunking booth, and we get to have pizza, cupcakes, and lots of juice, and we have great teachers.
I like North Springs because it's always very welcoming when you come in. Teachers are friendly, staff is friendly, the kids are excited to see you, and that's what I love when I come in.
North Springs is awesome because the teachers and their children don't judge you when you make a mistake.
North Springs is awesome because the teachers are helpful.
North Springs is awesome because the teachers are nice, and they set up activities just for...
North Springs is awesome because the teachers and the principals work so hard.
North Springs is awesome because of the programs they have for us.
North Springs is awesome because of the students.
North Springs is awesome because I like seeing my teachers.
North Springs is awesome because I like learning math.
North Springs is awesome because it's a community and a family. From our faculty and staff, parents, and PTO, it's a community. It takes a village to raise a child. Parents and teachers are involved in the education of our students, and that's why we love North Springs and think it's the most awesome school in the whole wide world. I have the privilege of being the PTO president, which is a genuine honor that I enjoy every day.
North Springs is awesome because of its students, its staff, its parents, and its community. We all work really hard to make sure that North Springs is an awesome place to work and learn.
North Springs is awesome!
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you very much, North Springs. At this time, we are going to enter into our public participation. There's one person that signed up by the name of George. George, you'll be given three minutes to share your thoughts, and at this time, if you will come forward, state your full name for the record and your address. I'd appreciate that very much.
George Kennedy. My address is 5945 SC 34 East, Ridgeway, South Carolina. I'm here on behalf of a group, no, I can't say any names, so I'll just say to reinstate a former coach from a school in this district. This coach made an impact on the lives of anyone he ever came across, whether you're an athlete or not. The first time I ever met him, I was walking down the hall, having a bad day. I wasn't involved in sports or anything. He comes up to me and makes the point to find out what the problem is. And unfortunately, he is the rarity in today's education society. There are a lot of people out there just looking for a paycheck. He's out there to help the students. In 11th grade, he taught me out of dropping out of school, and now to see what's going on with him just really disturbs me. He's basically forced out of his position. Told he can't participate with the team, sent to a different school. And the fact is, he's more than an educator, more than a coach. He is the friend of anybody that needs him. He sees that you have a problem, he sees to it to help you. He teaches moral values, he teaches the idea of owning up to your own defaults. I know I was heck when I was in school. I was wrong a lot. Most of the time when I would realize I was wrong, that was because he would bring it to me and tell me I was the one who was wrong and make me see it. If we could have more people in this district like that, I think this district and every district that could have more people like that would be a lot better off. And that's basically all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Although Mr. George Kennedy is the only person who signed up, if there's anyone else who would like to address the board, you have an opportunity to do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll move to the next agenda item, which is our facilities report. Dr. Broschu?
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. At this time, I'll call on our Executive Director of Operations, Jack Carter, to present the facilities report.
Ladies and gentlemen, you have this week's report. Our CM and Ed are here. Are there any questions? I do want to give you a couple of quick updates. At RNE, the reinstallation of the baseball and softball fencing is underway. The master plan's at about 95%. Hope to have it back with some changes that Ed and I made to it, so we can take it to the school and go through it with them. It very much reflects what they'd ask us to do, so I don't think there'll be any issues there. On the culinary arts, health science area, that we were able to get the major demolition done before the students came back, one of the things I've learned in this job in 13 years, as-built drawings are not as-built, and we found some surprises. For instance, there were electrical feeds in the slab that we did not know were there, so we took out parts of the building's power grid. We were able to get that back up with some workarounds. The press box has been delayed a little bit. Some of that delay is because we held it up to make sure we had the colors right, because there's a little bit of a rebranding going on in Northeast, and we didn't want to put up the wrong color press box. So that's still supposed to be here sometime between the middle of September and the end of September to get it up. Thing went to sleep on me. Over at Ridgeview, as I said last time, we've authorized the survey of the athletic area so that we can start work back there. As soon as we have that back, we'll have our architect begin to work back there. That'll primarily focus on a concession stand, storage building that would serve both baseball and softball, a little more convenient for the fans, and improve our handicap access to that area, which today really doesn't have the proper type of, it's handicap accessible, but it's, we can improve it dramatically. The irrigation, as I shared with Mr. Jackson, because I've been running through it, when I reported last time, it wasn't fixed. It actually had been fixed that morning, I just hadn't found out yet. So it is up and running, and the hydroseating has taken place where all the portables were. You can see some grass growing in there now, and we'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from the board?
Can you walk me through the design process for, just because I've never been part of it before? When we do classrooms, like what we're doing at Richland Northeast, where we bring in new facilities like that, what's the typical design process? Who gets involved when, and how does that work?
You're talking about specifically like for culinary arts and...
Yeah, exactly.
We, in the case of those two programs, we had existing models that were, had proven to work, so we started the design based on that, and then we brought in the school to a certain extent. We brought in our cake folks to take a look at it and make sure we hadn't missed anything. Again, fortunately, we have a proven design on culinary at Blythewood, and we have two good designs on health sciences, one, the recent renovation at, or addition rather, at Ridgeview, and then also the one at Blythewood is a good design too. So we basically try to use what we know works and meets our standards.
So you say we bring in the school to a certain extent. What does that mean?
Yeah, we show it to the school, we ask for input from the school. Sometimes the input is stuff that we can't do, and we just have to go through that with them.
And that just saves us money by reusing some of the designs that we've had before?
We're not, we're reusing the layout. We still have to go through all the design stuff, because every site's different, where the feeds come from, you know? For instance, the culinary arts is going into what was the auto mechanics, I'm sorry, auto body shop. That's a much bigger space than Blythewood has, but it allows us to spread some things out and add some features that Blythewood doesn't have, much more floor space. The other bay, which was the woodworking bay, is also much bigger than any health science classroom we have, so there are some features that it'll have space-wise that Ridgeview doesn't have, for instance.
Thank you, Jack.
Other questions or comments from the board? Jack, on elementary 19, as a result of what's happening in the economy and building industry seems to be sort of bouncing back, I know we're just getting started with just some preliminary work, but as it relates to the budget, we're going to come above, under, at budget? What's your feeling?
We will not be outside the project budget.
Okay, that's a question. Thank you very much. Other questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the technology update. Dr. Broschu?
Yes, I'd like to call on our Executive Director for Technology, that's Tom Kramer.
Thank you, Dr. Broschu. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you each have tonight's update. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Dr. Burgess?
The one-to-one computing, can you just, in the next board brief, just give us which schools are in one-to-one and which ones we're facing in? I know we have bits and pieces of the report, but I can't remember.
You may have seen attached to tonight's agenda item, there is an outline that shows you phase one and phase two of the one-to-one project.
Oh, okay.
That may give you the information you need. If you need anything else, we'd be happy to, happy to bring that.
That's it. Thank you. I see it. I didn't even look at that. Thank you.
Tom, I just want to say, or Mr. Chairman, congratulations, you guys. I understand you won a pillar award, correct, for the VDI implementation or the...
Yes, sir.
...virtual desktop implementation, and that's very exciting. I know that's a large-scale project that many, many folks across the country are actually looking at what we're doing with that, so congratulations to y'all.
Great, thank you. It's a, it's a part of the whole team. We've been looking at it for quite some time. We're pleased to be able to offer that resource for the school district. Absolutely.
Other questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much, Mr. Kramer. Next, budget update. Dr. Broschu?
Yes, I'd like to call on our Chief Financial Officer, Bob Davis, to share an update about the budget.
Thank you, Dr. Broschu. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, the legislature is not in session, and the filing period for bills for the next session will not open for another 60 days yet. Locally, local funding, the county council will consider setting our millage, and that will occur either in late September, early October. I will apprise the board as we get a definitive date, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Questions or comments, Mr. Davis? Dr. Burgess?
Will we need to go to a meeting at county council about that, or they just notify you?
Dr. Burgess, I don't think the board will need to be present. Of course, the board is always welcome to attend, but I don't see a pressing need.
But if we do, you let us know.
Yes, ma'am, I certainly will.
Thank you, Dr. Burgess. Other questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much. Next, the agenda item is voting on the executive session items. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into a two-minute recess to discuss an issue.
Okay, without objection, we will go into a two-minute recess. Thank you very much.
James, do we need a thing?
Ma'am?
We don't need one.
No, we don't need that.
Thank you very much for your patience. Our board meeting is resumed. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion on the executive session items.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to...
Dr. Burgess?
Make a motion on student number one, that we recommend that student for application to Blythewood Academy. And on student number three, we deny their appeal.
Motion to be made by Dr. Burgess, is it second?
I second it.
Seconded by Ms. Brill. Is there any further discussion? That motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much. Next, student readmission requests. Chair will entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that...
Dr. Burgess?
For the student readmission request, that we uphold the administration's recommendation for these particular students, one through nine.
I second it.
Motion to be made by Dr. Burgess, and seconded by Mrs. Brill. Any further discussion? That motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much. Next, student admission requesting to the District's Adult Education Program. Chair will entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to grant the admission request into the District Adult Education Program for students one through five.
Removed by Ms. Specter. Seconded by Dr. Fleming. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. That motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much. Request for at-home instruction. The chair will entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that, we have one request for at-home, at-home instruction. And I move that we approve that request.
Removed by Dr. Fleming. Seconded by Ms. Specter. Any discussion? That motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much. Ratification of personnel. Dr. Broschew?
Yes, I'll call on Chief Human Resource Officer, Roosevelt Garrick, to recap the items that you'll be voting on this evening.
Mr. Chair, for your consideration, we have three pages of professional recommendations and four pages of classified recommendations. One page of professional release, two pages of support releases, and one page of in-district transfers for your information.
Chair will entertain a motion?
I move approval, Mr. Chair.
Removed by Ms. Brill. Seconded by Ms. Specter. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. That motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much. Under old business action requested, we are going to be seeking the approval, the administration is seeking the approval of proposed revisions to the policy JICJ, which is a policy concerning the use of electronic communication devices in schools, and policy JICDA, which deals with the code of conduct.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to move approval of policy JICJ and JICDA dash R.
Removed by Dr. Burgess. Seconded by Ms. Specter. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to thank Dr. Hamm for inserting those particular comments.
Thank you, Dr. Burgess. Ms. Manning?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say thank you to the, the staff that worked on this. I, I've expressed a slight disappointment in the fact that we, we, some of us, as parents, got this handbook this year with this policy in it. And at the bottom, it says that the policy was scheduled to be reviewed. I would have liked for us to have done this at the beginning of the summer so that what we put in print is finalized for our parents. So, but, but I do appreciate the work that was done and, and certainly approve of what we've done with it.
Any further dis... Thank you, Ms. Manning. Any, Dr. Fleming?
Dr. Hamm, and I, I looked through the policy, and I wasn't sure that I saw anywhere what's discussed about people lending devices to one another. I, I worry, that's one thing that worries me really bad. I mean, I think people should be responsible for their own devices, and, you know, you don't understand what I'm saying. I, I really have a problem with lending back.
It's not addressed by the policy. There is nothing, there's nothing there about it. That's something we could add if the board so desired it to be added. But I will say that in a number of the successful places, particularly where phones are used for instructional purposes, one of the things that happens is kids do share information that's on phones, and it's been a successful strategy.
I understand during academic times, that's fine. But what I'm worried about is when he takes my, they lay it on the desk, and somebody picks it up without their permission. And that kind of, those are the types of things I worry about in the long term. It may not be something we can address at this time, and I'm not going to hold a firm on the policy, but it's something I believe we need to think about. Because I, I ran across that in the last couple of weeks.
Dr. Fleming, very good observation. Dr. Hamm, would you be willing to investigate and bring back a recommendation to the board if it requires a miniature policy that addresses that specifically?
If you would like us to do, add some language that we recommend that students not share devices unless it's for a specific academic purpose, I would be happy to insert that language.
How do we do that then? Okay, okay, that'd be great.
Can we approve it with that language?
Do, do we need to then not vote on it tonight in order to get that language?
I believe if you can agree with the, the idea of that language, you could go ahead and vote. We would make that modification.
Phil, can you add that? Okay.
That, that can be added right now as part of the second reading.
Okay. Okay, okay. Any further discussion? Yes, Ms. Specter?
Are these devices, are they password protected?
I'm going to ask Mr. Kramer to address how these devices work.
I think when we're, when we're talking about...
I think the answer is it depends, but he can...
Yeah, it depends is really a good answer. Certainly, personal devices are, are set up by the owners themselves, and if students are bringing devices to school and using them, that's going to be depend, dependent on how it's configured. So we, we have not addressed that in, in this policy about mandating that. And I think that we, we can monitor this, this process as we go along. If that becomes an issue, that may be something that we could look at adding at a later date after we learn and, and evolve through this process of this influx of, of personal-owned computing devices into the schools. But we, we did not see a need at this point to, to, to have, bring that forward as a concern.
Dr. Fleming had said about, you know, reaching over and picking up someone else's device if there was a password on it, if it wouldn't use it anywhere.
That's, that's a good, good observation. If it is password protected, it would, it would help, it'll help in that, in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Specter.
Thank you, Ms. Specter. Any further discussion? If not, the motion to approve the proposed policy revisions with the agenda that Dr. Fleming recommended is before you. If you have not voted, we ask that you vote at this time. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much. New business no action requested. The one-to-one evaluation overview and baseline report. Dr. Broschew?
Yes, I'll turn this over to Dr. Hamm and her team. I know we have some guests here this evening, and she will introduce them.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as we were beginning the one-to-one computing project, we wanted to have an evaluation model that would give us information throughout the process of the implementation that would help us to be successful. We wanted to achieve outcomes. And we found an evaluation model called Getting to Outcomes that actually is authored by people right here in Columbia and a resident of our own school district, Dr. Abraham Wandersman, who is here along with Dr. Annie Wright. I've asked them to do two things tonight. One thing they have done is, well, they've collected a whole variety of data. But what they're going to present tonight is some baseline data that we have at the conclusion of the first phase of the rollout. And then probably equally as important to kind of give you an overview of what the GTO evaluation process is like because it's not, you know, a one-time, at-the-end-of-the-year thing. It's an ongoing process to help give us information that will help us achieve the outcomes that we want with our students and in our classrooms. So Dr. Abraham Wandersman and Dr. Annie Wright.
Thank you very much. Very pleased to be here and have a chance to talk to you about evaluation. I'm a professor of psychology at the university, and being a professor, it's hard to be brief, but I've been asked to be brief. I'll do my best. Next slide, please. So what we're going to do, that's iceberg. And what we're going to talk about in the brief time we have today is the tip of the iceberg, both in terms of what's called formative evaluation and outcome evaluation. I will describe briefly an accountability approach called Getting to Outcomes or GTO, and we'll tell you about some of the initial survey results from the baseline data. Next slide. I'm going to start off with some very, very hard-to-read slides. And I'll tell you what they say. There are, I'm teaching a course right now for graduate students on evaluation, and it takes a whole semester. But in four slides, I can explain some of the basic points of evaluation. But don't tell my students, because they won't come back. Scenario A tries to show an arrow missing the target, and there's a big fat evaluation report that comes out at the end of a project, and it said there weren't many outcomes. And people are, the guy is crying at his desk because after all that time, energy, and money, there weren't outcomes. Scenario B is a different outcome. The arrow hits the target, and in this case, the high-risk youth is graduating from high school. So outcome evaluation is about whether or not you got the outcomes. So one of the big questions is why do we sometimes get scenario A and why do we sometimes get scenario B? Why do we sometimes get outcomes and why do we sometimes not? Next, please. So lots of times, there's a version of what's been called shoot, aim, ready. There's a deadline. People rush to that deadline, whether they're really ready or not to launch that initiative. And lots of times, that initiative is not well-planned, it's not well-implemented, and there's no outcome. And that's called formative or process evaluation. Next slide. In this slide, there is some good initial planning. They come close to hitting the target, but you can't quite see it, but it misses the target. And at the bottom right is something called CQI or Continuous Quality Improvement. What can we learn about what went well and what didn't go so well so that we can improve in the future? And that can play a role as one rolls out one-to-one, phase one, phase two, phase three. How do we get better and better over time? And the last of the bow-and-arrow slides is ready, aim, shoot, and hit the target. Careful planning, careful implementation, and the high-risk youth in this case is graduating from high school. So in those four slides, we have outcome evaluation, process and formative evaluation, and something called continuous quality improvement. Next slide. So getting to outcomes, and I really am sorry, these are dark. They came out much lighter in our projection back, back at, back home. Getting to outcomes is about accountability. And you can't go very far in the education world and not hear the word, word accountability. What we've done in a system called Getting to Outcomes is try to take the mystery out of accountability and also help people reach results-based accountability. And in, within this system, we will evaluate implementation, and we will evaluate outcomes. And Getting to Outcomes and GTO are trademarked by the University of South Carolina and RAND Corporation. Next, please. So in terms of trying to demystify what accountability is, accountability is about asking and answering 10 questions. The first question has to do with needs and resources. What are the needs and what are the resources? For example, what are the needs in terms of technology and education and skills, and what are the potential resources to meet them? And I won't go into detail on how GTO, how one-to-one has been addressing these questions. And we have a hand, in, in your packet, you have brief descriptions of how that's done. I'll just briefly describe how there's a question-and-answer approach to accountability. So how do you know you need to be doing this, and what, what are the needs? Once you know the needs, what are you trying to achieve? And that's called goals and outcomes. And those goals and outcomes are based on the needs that you have in the district. Once you know what you're trying to achieve, then the big question is how are you going to get there? And we have three circles that relate to that. One is using evidence-based approaches. Things that have worked somewhere give us an idea of what works. Because it's worked somewhere, we also have to be concerned about fit. So if it's worked out in California... So, if it's worked out in California, will it work here in Richland Two? And another accountability question is do we have the capacity to do it, both in terms of infrastructure and in terms of professional development to actually do the integrating of technology and education? So, that's what we mean about being accountable. And then it moves into the actual plan. Who's going to do what, when, where and how? How will the devices be rolled out, et cetera? Number seven is about implementation. There's a three-phase implementation plan. How well is it being implemented? Number eight revisits what we set up in the beginning of outcomes. What were we trying to achieve? And after a period of time, we answer that question. Did we achieve those outcomes? And in the next few slides, I'll talk about some of the outcomes that we'll be looking at in terms of one-to-one. Number nine is CQI or Continuous Quality Improvement. How do we get better and better over time? And number 10, last but not least, is sustainability. If this thing is working, how do we keep it going year after year? Next slide. So, these are 10 accountability questions and they can be used in one-to-one, they can be used in being accountable about just about anything. And by asking and answering these 10 questions, we can demonstrate whether results-based accountability is taking place. The next two slides actually describe in very brief detail how accountability is being addressed in one-to-one. And because of time, I won't go into that, but you have that. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is how we get to outcomes, how the evaluation will track outcomes. And the top box is that one-to-one provides technology access and professional development. After that's provided, that should lead to improved instructional quality by teachers, which should lead to improved student engagement, which should lead to improved academic achievement and 21st century skills, which should lead to improved graduation rates and post-secondary success. So, that's the logic of what will take place in this evaluation. And it's a longitudinal evaluation and it takes time to see those outcomes actually achieved, but that's what we'll be tracking. Next slide, please. So, we're all interested in outcomes. And by the way, according to the newspaper article that came out a week ago Sunday, it appears that this is the only district in the Midlands that seems to be taking an evaluation of what it's doing with technology and education seriously in terms of having an evaluation, a systematic evaluation. So, we'll be looking at student engagement, active learning interests and relevance, social and emotional learning, and behavioral engagement, including fewer discipline problems to see whether those things actually happen. And then in terms of achievement outcomes and 21st century skills, we'll be looking at core academic domains, including standardized tests, and 21st century skills like creativity and innovation, critical thinking and problem-solving, communication, collaboration, global awareness, influential, information fluency. Next slide, please. And we're going to do this with a variety of approaches to collecting information. One is annual surveys with teachers, annual surveys with students, and annual surveys with parents. We'll also be doing observations in the classroom to see what actually is going on in the classroom in terms of teaching and education. We'll also use archival records like tests and district logs related to discipline, et cetera, and we'll also do some focus groups. Next slide, please. So, as I mentioned, this is a longitudinal evaluation. It takes time, just as when President Kennedy announced and obviously Neil Armstrong's death reminds us that we did not get to the moon in a year. It took several years to achieve that magnificent outcome. It takes time to achieve outcomes. So, what we've collected so far since one-to-one has just started is baseline data in phase one, and you'll hear some of the survey data we have. There's an expectation of doing this data year after year to see how things develop and whether outcomes are achieved. I'm now going to turn it over to Dr. Wright and then we'll have time for questions and hopefully we've intrigued you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Dr. Wandersman suggested, we're collecting a great deal of data and indeed what we're bringing you tonight really is the tip of a very large iceberg. So, tonight I'm going to be sharing some initial teacher reports as well as some parent survey data. The teacher reports that we received, we had about 70% participation from teachers in the district, 16 schools with over 90% of teachers responding to the survey. And the data that I'll share first comes primarily from the teachers who are one-to-one at phase one, so during the previous school year. This is about 316 Richland Two teachers. Overall, about 97% of them told us that they think one-to-one is going somewhat well or extremely well. We're very pleased to see this outcome with, you know, less than 5% of both those middle and high school teachers reporting some not well at all responses. We know that one of the major initiatives running through the one-to-one program is really developing a community of learners. And this refers specifically to teachers. The idea that teachers are going to be working together and become that community of learners on their own. So, we asked, I can effectively help others to coordinate the use of content, technologies, and teaching approaches at my school? We see the vast majority of teachers either agreeing or strongly agreeing with this. This is information that we've been sharing with both the district and school-level technology integration staff as well. We know that classroom management has been a concern and so we asked specifically of these one-to-one teachers, since starting one-to-one, I've noticed that classroom management has been much harder, about the same, or easier. And overall, about 89% of the one-to-one teachers responding to this survey said that classroom management has been easier or about the same. As Dr. Wandersman referred to, we're going to be tracking these kinds of responses over time to watch and see how they might move. The next responses that I have are for all responding teachers, so about 1,100 teachers in total. Here, about 90% of teachers agreed or strongly agreed first that they could effectively select technologies to use in their classroom that enhance what they teach, how they teach, and what students learn. Secondarily, again, 90% said that they can use technologies that enhance the content for lessons in their subject area. Again, asking all teachers, how satisfied have you been with the professional development offerings from the district? Vast majority, 92%, saying they were somewhat or very satisfied. And you can see the breakdown there by grade level as well. Same question, how satisfied with the professional development you have received from your school's ITSs to date? 93% of teachers were somewhat or very satisfied. Again, was a pleasure to take this slide in particular to the ITSs last week and kind of show that to them. Secondly, we'll talk briefly about some parent data that we have from baseline. We had about 2,000 parents respond to the survey that we sent out at the end of last year. Out of the many questions that we asked, one of them was about how parents feel about the amount of time their child spends on a computer. The top bar, we asked specifically about how they feel about this at home. So, 71% said just right. At school, we saw 74% being just right. And the slight difference that we're seeing there is 17% suggested that they weren't getting quite enough at school. These are the kinds of data that we're going to continue to look at comparing one-to-one as that changes as we move through the rollout. We also asked, my child's use of technology in school seems to be improving their education. We provided the full distribution of responses here. You can see where parents with both elementary, middle, and then high school students responded, with the majority of parents saying strongly or, strongly agree or agree. We also know that cyberbullying has been a concern for the board as well as for the parent action committee. And so, this is something that we really want to include and observe carefully as the rollout continues. We started collecting baseline data here by a simple question of whether a parent has perceived that their student has been cyberbullied while at school. We can see the majority of responses being into disagree or strongly disagree. And again, we're going to continue to watch how this moves. Dr. Wandersman mentioned the idea of continuous quality improvement. Examples of how the evaluation data is being used. We see ourselves as, very much as partners in this process. We work closely with Debbie and Donna and their team. We share data openly and have good conversation about it. We wanted to provide you just a few examples of kind of what has come out of that collaboration. So, one example was that we helped to shift the timetable for implementation in middle schools. Based on some initial data that came out at the beginning of the fall, November tryout that we assisted with, we shifted some of the rollout into phase two for middle schools and we're going to, we think that that's going to continue to be successful. We've also helped shape and plan professional development. Some specific examples just being really ensuring that teachers are ready for a movement over from a Windows system to a Chrome system, making sure that they're really up on the Google apps that they need. We're getting our own education and all of the technology as we move through the evaluation as well. We'll open this up now to any questions that you may have.
Questions or comments from the board?
Dr. Hamm?
Ms. Manning?
Is there a cost to us for doing this project or is this done through a grant or, explain the business relations?
Our office that deals with evaluation, research, and accountability has a budget for evaluation and the costs are covered through that budget. So, it's coming out of our operational budget. It's not part of a grant.
Questions or comments from the board? Dr. Burgess?
You just kind of looked out of the corner of your eye.
My peripheral saw you.
I had a hard time seeing some of your slides. Tell me about phase two. When does that start?
Current.
Okay. I just couldn't see them. And phase three, looked like 2015?
Yeah. Phase three will begin next school year.
Okay.
So, the phases correspond to school years.
Okay. And it looks like you had some really good descriptive data. So, I would even take it a step further and look at some other kind of inferential stuff.
As we said, the tip of the iceberg. We have been sharing some of the open-ended data as well.
But I mean, I would even look, take it a step further and really do some other stuff and I'd be happy to work with y'all on that. You know, I'm a math nerd. Who's the owner of the data? We are?
We own the, we own the data, but the GTO process and evaluation process.
Right. I understand that's their part, but we own the data. Okay. And then, have y'all looked at testing or doing some models for linking student achievement? I didn't see that in there, either that or I missed it. Or is that the next phase?
If we were to have an hour with the board, you would hear a lot about that.
But that's what people want to know is like, does the technology really make a difference in student outcomes?
Absolutely.
Student achievement, academic success.
We do have a document that lists all of the variables that we're looking at and make sure that you have that.
Okay. And so, that'll be in the next phase that you're doing or that's what we did already?
Some of it we're actually, we'll begin collecting as part of this phase.
Okay. And what do you mean by classroom management? That slide where you said that students or that teachers didn't see, I think that's what you said, teachers didn't see a difference or?
We asked if, how has classroom management changed since starting one-to-one? Has it been much easier, about the same, or harder? You know, we didn't offer teachers a working definition of what management was. We left that to them to decide.
So, it could be behavior or?
Issues is probably how they interpret it.
Great. Super. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burgess. Other questions, comments from the board?
Just last comment.
Ms. Manning?
I applaud the district for doing this. I think that all the questions I've heard Dr. Burgess and you folks talk about and hear, all the questions that we've been hearing and that we're asking is aboard to really see what the effectiveness is. And because this is so new, there really isn't a lot of data as it relates to this topic. And so, I'm glad to see that we're kind of blazing the way to get this information out there in a well-thought-out way. Y'all are obviously much smarter than I am to figure out ends and all those other things. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Other questions, comments from the board? One question, in terms of self-assessment of the teacher's level of comfort with using technology, obviously it's a self-assessment that they're doing, will there be any way that you'll be able to measure it based upon evidence provided that shows in fact that there is that level of comfort beyond simply saying that I am comfortable using it?
That's why we talk about using multiple methods and that's why we'll be doing classroom observations to actually see what goes on. So, we understand your question and it's a very important one.
Thank you very much. Other questions, comments from the board? Yes, Dr. Fleming?
Really what I want to know and I'm not clear on is the number one accountability question is whether the underlying needs and conditions must be addressed and what are our goals? I don't know what that is. To me, that's the most important thing is the board number. What do we want to teach our kids? And then it's my duty to make sure we do it, but I want to make sure that I know what those are. If you could delineate that later on.
We actually have formally written goals and I'll be glad to send those to you in an email. But they range from some general things like equity, that we want to give our students access to technologies that some of them may not otherwise have if we didn't provide it, to specific 21st century skills and improving academic achievement in core academic areas. But they're written, we know what they are and we'd be glad to share them with you.
Thank you, Dr. Fleming.
How do you measure it? Have you proven, I mean, those are so nebulous, how do you really measure that? And I guess that's my, now, you've got tests, like I said, and you may-
You should-
Test and also to do this, but I just want to know that, just if I could get that from-
We can do that. I'll tell you what, Annie's smiling over there because she is mapping the measures to all of those goals and outcomes. Can she put together a document to show that? So, we've got that for you.
Thank you, Dr. Fleming. Other questions, comments from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Hamm?
If you would just give me a point of privilege. Early on in the process of this rollout, Dr. Wandersman sent me this photograph of a group of teachers who came to a board meeting, computers in hand, absolutely furious that they didn't want the computers, they didn't know how to use them, there hadn't been professional development, they were pretty furious. And I mean, that sort of strikes a fair amount of fear in your heart when you're trying to do a similar kind of a rollout. I think it is a real tribute to our ITSs and our technology integration specialists that we have over 90% of our teachers who feel confident using this technology in the classroom. And several of those people are here. The one-to-one rollout is really chaired by Nancy Gregory from Academics and Donna Toyber, who's sitting over here. So, I want them to stand up. And then we've got technology integration specialists here as well. And I just want to recognize the hard work that got the kind of accomplishment we saw in those numbers. So, if you would, please stand up.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm.
Thank you.
Dr. Brochue? Next, the only agenda is the report on the elementary magnet programs?
Yes, and I will call on our chief academic officer, Sue Mallett, who will introduce this report.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Brochue. We have Dawn McLeod, who is our Director of Academic Initiatives. She will present a report to you regarding the district's elementary magnet programs. I'll turn it over to Dawn.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have our 2012 update for you. Right now, we have 33 magnet programs in our district total and of those, 12 are at the elementary level. Our elementary programs, students are selected by lottery, all of them with the exception of CFA. So, we have very similar models there. We have different types of elementary magnets in our programs. We have, we have four centers, CFI, CFA, CFK, and our Montessori program. We have two schools within a school- We have two school within a school models, and these are fairly new for us at the elementary level. But we have the ACE program at Lonnie B. Nelson, and we have our Awesome Stems program here at North Springs. And then we have six full school magnets where every student who attends the school is involved in the magnet program. We started this model with our federal grants a few years back. But those schools include Condor, Forest Lake, Keels, Windsor, Rice Creek, and Killian. Every year, we look at our magnet programs and monitor data. We started strategic planning with all of our programs as well. So we are always looking out three to five years to make sure that we are making adequate growth and that we're staying on target with our programs. This year, we had over 5,000 applications for magnet programs. But of those, 2,000, 2,175 applications were submitted. Now, each student can, can submit up to three applications, so that represented about 1,200 students. Of those, about 500 were accepted to magnet programs, a little over 300 accepted to our choice programs. So our total approvals, we had about 816 approved for a choice program in our district.
Elementary?
Yes, at our elementary, at the elementary level. Yes, ma'am. Our three most popular, Center for Knowledge, Center for Inquiry, and our Awesome Stems program here at, at North Springs. And North Springs, I mean, the Stems program is one of our, our latest, newest and greatest. So they, they've really made great strides in the community, and we're seeing that they're very popular. Center for Knowledge had over 100 applications over the next most popular. Go back, please. At CFK, we had 364 applications submitted. Of those, 47 students were accepted. If we look at the current waitlist, and the way that we calculate our current waitlist, we look at those students who were not accepted to CFK, but then have not been accepted by one of their other two choices. They could have three. So even if they weren't accepted to CFK, they may have been accepted by a choice option or by another program. But we know we have 148 students on our waitlist. And based on the number of applicants that we have to our CFK program and looking toward the future and what we can do, the academics department is recommending that we replicate CFK in the northern end of the district. And this would be new for us. We've always gone with original programs. We've never replicated a program. But this is one that we think that we have the community support, that we have the number of applications that we can make this successful. We proposed a northern CFK, the site's to be determined there. But we'd like to open it for the next school year. So we would like to open applications in January of 2013. We would like to serve grades starting with K through two with addition of one grade level per year for four-year phase in. We'd like to have two classes per grade level. This allows for students, for teachers to collaborate in designing their classes. And this would allow us to accept 44 students per grade level. Our projected cost, $673,690. That would be for staffing, for staff development, for our support personnel. Potential locations and construction timeline? Dr. McDaniel and Jack Carter, can you address questions about that?
In terms of potential locations for the CFK North, we've looked at a variety of our, our middle schools, because that's the model that's been very successful with some of our other elementary magnets. And the one that was master planned from conception is Muller Road Middle School. That site has a master planned location for a potential center, has master planned the parking, the queuing, and the driving, entryway into the school to get to the cafeteria, awning locations. All of that was thought through when we designed and then built Muller Road Middle School. And so that's where we would recommend from the planning office, the location of that site. And we have conferred with Ms. McLeod regarding a potential follow-up survey with parents that applied for CFK in the previous year. And we could look at those that got in and also those that did not got, did not get in to just gauge their interest relative to the proximity. It is in the northern part of the district, which we know we have a lot of folks driving down from the north to the southern end to participate. That would open up more spaces available for that program in both parts of the district. It is convenient to I-77, so there are some definite pros there. But we'd like to explore that a little further. But right now, that is our recommendation in terms of a site.
Questions, comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Manning and then Ms. Brill.
Probably going to have a lot of comments and questions. I did some of my own analysis on this. CFK is oversubscribed based off the number of parents who applied versus what got in by almost 800%. That's huge, oversubscription. It's the number one program that I hear from, from parents in the community that didn't get in. And just for record, I am one of those parents who has not gotten in.
Well, maybe your problem will be solved, Mr. Manning.
But, so, you know, I, I just think it is a very important program. I think i-if we replicate this program, even with the numbers that we're looking at replicating, we're still going to be oversubscribed by a fair amount. You know, I, I have to ask the question, if this is such an effective program as a center, are there things that we should be replicating or taking from this program and implementing throughout our schools in some wholesale manner? You know, what is the effectiveness and draw of this program that the students are excelling to such a high level from when we look at the scores? And, you know, do we do a center? Or maybe it needs to be a school or some other model for this to work? I'd just like some feedback on those thoughts.
We also have Dr. Jolene Hall here. They will be happy to address any questions as well.
Well, Dr. Hall, if you'd come up and respond to that, we'd appreciate it.
That's a tough one.
Nothing like being put on the spot, Jolene, right?
You know, we don't have the experience on any type of whole school, like a larger school type of program. I do think the small school environment does play into our benefit of our success. I think a lot of parents look for that. Are there components that could be brought into a larger school setting? I'm sure there are, but I don't know. I think that would be dependent upon academics and what they saw would be the right fit there.
And why would we do K through two as the initial?
When we started the program, originally, we were K-5. And we had quite a few stumbling blocks with the older grades because the core knowledge curriculum is built from one year to the next. The theme is knowledge builds on knowledge with the National Core Knowledge Curriculum. And if you have at the, say, fourth grade level, if you bring in maybe three or four students, then the larger population would have had the preceding curriculum, and they kind of fill in the gaps. But when you bring in a whole grade level that's new to it, you're going to have years of information that there would be a void in. And so what we found after we started originally was it was best for that K-2 block. Also, we have Singapore Math, which is a K-2 curriculum. It gradually accelerates students. And so by the time they get in third grade, they are typically ready to conquer a book that's about a year and a half above the grade level. What would happen if you came in and brought in a whole school model? You wouldn't have that type of program. You couldn't take a fifth grader very easily, not all fifth graders, and bump them up that level. So you would have to modify the curriculum. And from what I'm hearing from parents, I think their wish is to actually replicate what's currently existing.
Yeah. I think it's interesting when we look at the comments that you made, that, you know, if I take my daughter next year going into third grade and move her into a program like CFK, the, the comment that I'm hearing is that what she has received in other schools would not have advanced her as quickly as what she's receiving in your program.
Well, I'm, I'm sure that that isn't entirely true there. I just think that our curriculum, the kids are used to the patterning, how we format the thing, the typical lessons, and it has allowed for a gradual increase. That's taken years of kind of strategizing and figuring out the right next for kids. It's working for us, but I would not dare say in a comparison to any other location. Also, the other point that I was going to make there, Mr. Manning?
Go ahead.
You had had so many questions. When we started and doubled in size, we did do the K-2 model at that time, and that did work well for us. So that was why, that was my suggestion there.
And you feel like that 44 is the right number for your school to be effective per?
Yes. The advantage is that we contain. We did not have that advantage originally where we only had one class per grade level, and it was quite a challenge for one teacher to put together the curriculum.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Ms. Brill?
I was just curious, why would the next one be on the grounds of a middle school and not on an elementary school? Why is that a better, better fit? I think?
Dr. McDaniel, you like?
We, we have a lot of history with sharing facilities, sharing cafeteria resources. That was one of the original designs of our Center for Knowledge, and then Center for Inquiry, and now Center for Achievement. The, the middle schools have the size and their cafeteria space and their core space to share some of those. That works, works very well. We have great success with it.
With, for younger children?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And no conflicts there that's? Well, you are self-contained, your building.
Right.
But these kids would be at Muller Road, in Muller Road. Is that correct?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. They would be exterior. All of our CF, CFK, CFI, CFA, and, and our other standalone magnets began in portables. And so the idea would, these would also begin in a portable classroom. We want to make sure that there's appropriate interest, that there's appropriate programming. And Jolene fondly remembers being in a portable for almost 10 years, I think. Where, you know, established that the program was very popular. At that point, we then would go to, ostensibly, we could go to the public to see if they would support a permanent structure. But that allows us that time to, to not have that investment and, and not be certain that it's the right location, it's the right program. And so that model has also worked well for us, and that's what we anticipate following here.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Other questions, comments from the board? Mr. Specter?
I would like to ask one question. Dawn, you had mentioned in your slide that you guys would like to open this in the year 2000, not always, not 2013, 2014. How soon would you need to start planning to get ready?
We will start immediately looking for, looking at designing a survey for parents and moving toward waiting to, if not this year, then, you know, the one that is. Ideally, we'd have everything ready by Magnet Fair in order to communicate to the parents that we do have this opening. Our Magnet Fair is a Thursday after, it's, it's November 29th, which is a Thursday after Thanksgiving. But we like to communicate to our parents, let them know if you have any new offerings, and have them, give them the opportunity to learn all they can about the program before our January application.
Mr. Chair, one other question. Are we choosing to do one magnet replicated sort of as a model? We'll see how it works since we do have others like STEMS that are way oversubscribed as well. Is that the reason why we're choosing one and not others?
CFK is a, is a standalone, separate center, is, is a unique program. I think with our, and every program that we have certainly is unique. STEMS, science, engineering, technology, math, we see that integrated through all of our elementary schools in different ways. And certainly, there's a very different focus here at North Springs, but we see a focus also at Forest Lake, at Catawba Trail. Denise is looking at integrating a lot of STEMS curriculum. So you can tailor it to your schools. But I think STEMS can be incorporated into all of our elementary schools. And you don't necessarily have to have a, a magnet model for that. Again, it's worked very well, and Sally's done some very innovative things that they have here at North Springs. But it's, I think we're seeing that our community is very interested in science and math. And we certainly see that at the high school application level. We see more applicants for our, our strong science, math, magnet programs. We'd like to see a, a strong program at the middle school. And are, are looking at what we can do there.
And are there middle school and potentially high school programs we'd be looking to replicate in the near future as well? Or is this just elementary right now?
Just elementary right now. Most of our, where we have students that have not been accepted to programs or we have them on waitlist is primarily at the elementary level. By the time we get to our high school programs, students are self-selecting. We have many, many fewer applicants. They're very well qualified for the programs that they apply for, but we have far fewer applicants. A bonus crop of applicants for a high school program would be 85 versus 364. And we take 44 students per grade level at the high school as well.
All right. Thank you.
Dr. Hall, is there any information that you have or been looking at that shows how your students are doing, particularly third graders in math, versus non-CFK students on the state pass?
We do. It's kind of, Dawn is laughing because I was a little disappointed in our rollout this year. In the state of South Carolina, according to School Digger, we ranked number three in the state this year. We had been ranking number one in the state in years prior. We have two other schools that we've been playing ball with a little bit, but we have done very well.
One of those schools is a selective school for the gifted in Greenville, so that doesn't really count. That is a straight lottery.
A generic question, Dawn. In terms of the opportunities for parents to find out about this program in potential or any others as far as the career fair is concerned, briefly describe how do we communicate with the public? Obviously, the website, but beyond that, what other means of communication do we employ to make the public aware before the process begins?
We do mailing to every house in the district, advertising our dates for our information nights, which are held in January. We advertise our Magnet Fair through that mailing as well. We do EdConnect messages. We do email blast. Our public information office helps us, helps us with school newsletters. We, our schools are very helpful. They, sometimes they send out their EdConnect messages as well, alerting parents to upcoming opportunities. We are on R2TV. With this, again, this is going to be a special challenge for us, and I think we will do more information meetings earlier because we will have questions from our existing parents as well as questions from those parents that will be interested in our new program. And there's a lot to work out there.
I'm glad to hear. That's really what I wanted to hear.
We'll work with them. I think that certainly there will be two different information meetings in January, but early on, we would include parents and give them information as we have it.
Thank you. Other questions, comments from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Fleming?
I got a working mic. Good. I don't think you'll have to worry about publicity. I'm just, just a feeling I have here. I think, I think you'll have all the applicants you want. In fact, my, I feel like because of the difficulty of getting into these programs, you don't get as many as you probably would. I mean, that's my feeling anyway. Okay, on the practical side here, we'll get into that. The $673,000 for staffing, does that include the teacher staffing itself?
Yes.
Okay. So that's teacher staffing, which was teachers we would have provide anyway. So that's not a, I mean, that's not an extra cost. If you've got the number of students, you're going to have those teachers that you're going to support for salaries. So that's equipment and supplies and training, which I'm sure that's intense, especially when you start up a, a new school like this. Okay. Now, on the logistical side of housing, Mr. Carter, how are we going to house this program if we, if we decide to go through?
Well, fortunately, we have, I hate to use the word surplus, but we have available portables right now because we were able to, with the high schools coming on, with high school, Westwood High School coming on a lot, we were able to empty a bunch of portables. So depending on how we phase this in, if we wanted, essentially, you're going to need a classroom for each grade level times to some administrative spaces and some other things. So you're going to approach as many as 18 portables on the campus. Right now, we would have that capability to do that. And then the cost would be how we would phase that in. If we do it the way we would typically do, the way we did CFA, the way we did CFI, the way we did CFK, the way we do our child development, we would have to have portables, I'm sorry, awnings connecting to portables, connecting to drop-off pickup points. In some cases, we try to take the awning complex as close to the middle school as we can for cafeteria purposes. so the, we can phase it in, or we can do it all at one time. If you do it all at one time, it's probably gonna approach six hundred and fifty, seven hundred thousand dollars total cost, one-time startup cost. If you phase that in over a couple of years, it's just a matter of how you do that. And as an aside, one of the advantages to be on a middle school campus versus another elementary campus is traffic. These are all rider, car riders, and you have a separation in start times. If you put it on an elementary campus, you're adding all of those additional car riders to the elementary's already sometimes very crowded car rider lines.
Okay, my next question is if you do a portable city, which is what we started at CFK, which worked fine, and you decide to build a permanent, we've decided to build a permanent facility later on, and I know we're talking down the future, but we tend to do that in this district.
Right.
Are you going to make sure you place things where we can duplicate without?
We've already looked at that. There is space to put it relatively close to the existing Muller Road building, if we use that site, and still have room to build the correct-sized permanent facility on that site without interfering, not having to move portables again.
Very good. Okay.
Dr. Fleming, that's part of like a master plan that we would do for rolling in and phasing in.
And that cost, by the way, includes playground fencing, awnings. That's an all-in cost.
Okay, well, I think this is a great program, and I feel like the support for it in the district is gonna be there. And I support it, and I hope we can bring this online next year.
Thank you, Dr. Fleming. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Ms. Chairman.
Dr. Burgess.
I just want to clarify. It seems to me the centers are built on middle school campuses because they're eligible for more federal funding. And I know there was a reason. Steve Hefner explained that to me a long time ago, and that's why we did that. Does Dr. Broschu, do you know?
The population, the location really wouldn't, I don't think, play into the dollars that would follow the child or the children.
Well, he did tell me there was a reason, but I can't, I think it was something about eligibility for funding and approval process, but I'll ask him. My question goes back to, my second question goes back to what Dr. Fleming asked. In terms of the money, the six seventy-three, Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis?
I'm sorry, Dr. Burgess, I missed the question.
The money, six seventy-three, this is for next year, correct?
Dr. Burgess, I'm not prepared to answer that question tonight.
Well, I mean, it says for the initial phase, right? So that's in next year's budget.
Yeah, we'd have to be in next year's budget. We would have to make that budget adjustment for next year.
So we would, are we, are you looking at decreasing the enrollments at the other, at the other CFK? You're not. So this would really look at?
Additional forty-four students per grade level.
And the way that will work is they'll go in K through two, and then the second grade will move up to the third grade, and then you admit the new crop for the, so every year, the budget will increase. So, Mr. Davis, you'd have to look at that to make sure that we had the money to pay for it. I mean, it's a great program. I hear nothing but wonderful things, and parents are clamoring to get their kids in.
Dr. Burgess, please keep in mind that the majority of the costs associated would be for teacher salaries, which we would be incurring regardless of their location.
But this would be adding more teachers, which you would have to do, correct?
We would have to do that. We will be serving the same number of students, whether they're at CFK or on our other elementary schools. So ostensibly, if you had a hundred students at another school, we'd have the teachers.
And after we have our four-year phase in, just like we have with the Center for Knowledge in the southern end of the district, for reporting purposes, we have a K-through-eight school at our district.
We have a K-through what?
K-through-eight school. Even though we separate it and we have separate report cards, we do have a, it's listed as a K-through-eight.
Because it's on a middle school campus.
Maybe that's what the reference.
Yeah, that's the only thing that I would think.
Yeah. I remember he told me there was a reason that they, the district did that, but I can't remember. I thought it had to do with funding.
It's less expensive because we're sharing facilities, such as the cafeteria and the media center.
Right.
Those did make it less expensive.
Ms. Chair, I want to make a comment.
Dr. Burgess finished. Ms. Manning, Dr. Burgess, you?
Oh, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's a good idea. I just want to make sure we got the money.
Mr. Manning?
I think financially, you know, a lot of the parents I talk to that do not get into CFI are going to private school. And I, I mean, I don't have any official study, but the parents that I talk to in the community, when they don't get into CFI, they're going to either private schools or they're going to other, maybe charter schools that have some specific focuses that the family feels are important. So I, in some ways, I think that'll actually increase some revenues by bringing in more students from private to the public school setting. That just seems like a sort of natural if, and/or kind of thing that I see quite a bit, so.
As a matter of fact, Mr. Manning?
I'm sorry. I hope we do pull from our private schools in the area. I was in a meeting once with the headmaster of Heathwood, and he said they didn't lose students to public schools, but they lost students on a regular basis to reach into magnets.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, Ms. Manning, if you remember when you, Ms. Brill and I spoke to that particular neighborhood not very long ago, they indicated very clearly that the father of two children ended up in a private school because he was not able to get into CFK.
Absolutely. The guy I work with, he's already told me that if he doesn't feel like he has an opportunity to get his children into CFI specifically, and he and his wife certainly bring a lot of revenue, let me say, to this area, they have the ability to actually pick up and move. And that if they couldn't get in within the next year, that that is in fact what they would do. And so that's how passionate parents are about that particular program. I think it's a positive.
Thank you very much. Any more comments or questions from the board? Thank you very much, Dr. Hall. Good job. Next on our agenda is the proposed revision to policy IKE, which deals with promotion and retention. Dr. Broschu?
Yes, sir. We're bringing to you this policy for consideration for revisions. And I'll ask Sue Millet, our chief academic officer, to answer any and all questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Broschu. What we have done is struck through where we say the PACT and or MAP measures of academic progress and to, so that it can be utilized year after year and not be tied to specific standardized tests. We would like to put in standardized test in that place. And so that's our recommendation.
It's not requiring any action tonight. Any comments or questions from the board at this time?
Ms. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Manning.
When was the last time PACT was given? Either three or four years ago.
It's been a while.
I just, I have some concern that a test that we haven't given for four years is on board policy. If we don't have a procedure for looking through board policy to make sure that they're updated, I think we need one. This isn't the first instance. I think I've come across a couple recently where we've updated some things and they didn't get updated in a timely manner, in accordance to policy. And to know that this is three years old, you know, are we looking at board policy? Is it relevant to what we do and the direction that we move in the district, or is it not? And so I just want to express that that's a concern to me, that we would be this far out without that kind of a change to this.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Other comments or questions regarding this particular policy from the board? Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the agenda items for our September board meeting, September eleventh. And that board meeting will be held at Poole Road. Dr. Broschu?
Yes, sir. Currently, we have four items already on the agenda for the September eleventh meeting. Faculty and staff focus report, budget update, back-to-school report, and revisiting policy IKE promotion and retention.
Are there any other items that the board would like to add to this agenda or any future board meeting agenda?
Ms. Chair, I would like to-
Ms. Specter?
Add to the next board, I don't know if it'll be ready by the next board meeting, but I would like for us to add, for us to go back and look at the magnet program.
Okay.
I'd like for it to be added as an action item.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Added as an action item.
I agree, but I think we need to really look at the funding and see how we do that. We may have to phase some things in too, so.
Well, as I said, if it's not ready by next board, at least by the other one, so they can have enough time to plan.
Well, it's gonna automatically come up at the next board meeting, so you'll make sure that we address it. Because it was on there tonight, it will automatically be brought forward. Absolutely. Are you cleared, Dr. Broschu?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Specter.
Ms. Chair?
Mr. Manning?
It relates to some of the policies I just mentioned earlier. I think there's three policies that have some material that need to be addressed. But before that gets addressed, I think we need to look at formalizing some of our board goals and visions. Board and superintendent goals and visions that are currently in draft form. I'd like to look at us formalizing those so that we can move forward with the policy changes that come after.
Absolutely. Very good. We'll make sure that's included as well. Thank you very much, Ms. Manning. Other requests for agenda items for our next board meeting or future board meeting, or a future board meeting? Hearing none. Thank you very much. Next, we have our second public participation session. I have no indication that anyone has signed up. However, if there's anyone here who would like to address the board and did not sign up to speak to the board, you may feel free to come to the mic and address the board at this time. If you'll come up and state your name and your address, you have three minutes.
Stevie Johnson, 201 Cricket Hill. I really wanted to say something about technology, but first, I'm going to backtrack a little bit for Center for Knowledge. I, too, lost the lottery two times for both of my boys, and it greatly impacted the choices I made. Now, granted, they're almost nineteen and twenty-one, but Jolene was the principal then, and it was in the portable. So I was so sorry to have missed that opportunity. And again, we left a private school environment specifically for terrific magnet programs. Our magnet programs are the bread and butter of keeping fabulous students. I'm not necessarily saying fabulous parents. I wouldn't want to throw myself right there, but that's the case. I really came because there are two things I've noticed on the technology reports, and it kills me because I don't get the stuff till the Fri-, you know, Monday night before, and I'm reading it in bed with a cup of tea. And I've talked to Debbie Hamm about this because I'm in such favor of the phone use, but I was confused this last time and didn't have a chance to call. Are we allowing phones to be used as phones? I thought there was a free use where they might be used. And a second thought came to me late last night while I was conversing with some, obviously, my husband, since I'm in bed with a cup of tea. And that was, if we've done such a great job with one-on-one computing and all of our kids have this device, why do they need an iPhone? And what educational value does it serve that they don't get on a large screen? I don't have an answer for it, but I'm throwing that out there as food for thought for you all to think about. And the second thing that I did spend a great deal of time on, and shoot, I didn't even bring it up here. I wish they would not print these in black. That's one thing on the PowerPoint. But I read with great interest the one-on-one computing initiative study. And I noticed in several times we took where teachers said somewhat are okay and put that with very favorable. Well, really, if you think about it, the somewhat is just like right in the middle. That's a neutral thing. That's not necessarily favorable, and that's what we're aiming for. Our one-on-one initiative is to be using technology to take us to the next level, for it to be super cool, terrific, and very dynamic. And I'm not sure that by lumping that, that helps us. And I noticed every time we did that, it was times where the teachers were saying somewhat at just around the fifty percent. And I'd love for you all to take a minute to go and look back at those numbers. And as a public who's struggling to understand and support technology, because I love the idea of us using it, but I'm still not sure we have empirical evidence to support it. I love as a community member to be able to see the empirical evidence that James Manning talked about, available to all of us, and I'm dying to see the variables because I think it would really support the program. And it would certainly allow me to be intellectually more involved with the technology since I still have a lot of questions about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else would like to address the board at this time? Hearing none. At this time, we'll entertain board and superintendent comments. Dr. Fleming?
It's great to be at North Springs. An awesome school, I tell you right now. And congratulations on your popularity and the applicants you get. I mean, that says a lot. We, years ago in ninety-eight, when we started choice programs, that was one of the things we wanted to see as a board was, you know, what choices would people really make when they had their options of doing it on their own? And so those numbers are important to me as a board member. I want to thank the board for a great meeting tonight. Did a lot of stuff back there that you did in executive session. And Mr. Manning, I mean, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
If you ever get us out on time, you're a great guy. I never did, so appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, Dr. Fleming. Dr. Burgess?
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Just wanted to thank North Springs for having us. It's a great school, as Dr. Fleming said. And the STEMs program with your magnet applications really shows that y'all are doing such wonderful things here. And I remember when I came here the first time, we hadn't even had all these additions and improvements. So y'all really come a long way. I want to thank everybody for the updates and the reports tonight. They were very helpful. We do read them at nauseam, and sometimes, you know, we ask a lot of questions, and sometimes we just need some more time to think about it. I want to congratulate all of our award recipients. Thought that was great to see our folks get up here and our, Dr. Riley and her team with their media stuff. Congratulations to y'all. That's very nice. And I want to acknowledge the Eagle Scouts. I always like to see them at the meetings. My son was an Eagle. One of my sons. My other one quit, but anyway. But my other son was a Needle, so anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Burgess. Ms. Specter?
Is this working now? I'm not gonna say a lot. I just want to tell Dr. H, thanks for having us tonight. And I really appreciate the book, and I know I'll be back at your school reading it to at least two kids that I know. So I just wanted to say thank you and congratulations to everybody, and I'm glad school's gone off to a good start. I would like to say, just on the benefit of the girl that's missing at Ridgeview, just to keep her in our prayers.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Specter. Ms. Brill?
Thank you, principal and staff of North Springs. It looks terrific. And I agree, North Springs is awesome. You're all doing a great job. Thank you so much. We're very grateful. And thank you, too, for the little book. Goes for baby Louis. He's gonna be two, and now he has a nice personal library. So thank you for the book. Wanted to comment, I know Dr. Wondersman and Annie Wright, and you all did a great job. Thank you so much. I know it's difficult to, you know, deliver a rather technical report briefly, but I appreciate the work that you all put into it, so thank you. We had a great school law conference in Charleston this past weekend, and I was so proud of Debbie Hamm and Jeff Potts. They did an awesome, they were the early bird report at seven-thirty in the morning, and the room was just about filled. So you all did a great job talking about the new South Carolina ESEA waiver. And I was really proud of Richland, too, so thank you. And our own Stephanie Burgess was part of the mock teacher dismissal hearing, and she was good. Go Richland, too. She did a great job. Also had an interesting report by a group of lawyers, so it was hard to stay awake on our charter school movement. And that was an interesting report. And so it was great to be there, and other board members were there as well, and thank you. We had a lot to discuss tonight.
Yes, we did. Thank you, Ms. Brill. Mr. Manning?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to thank everybody for their hard work, everybody getting off to the new school year. There's always a lot to be done. North Springs, you do have a beautiful school. You're doing great things. Keep up the hard work. And just as you're doing it here, you know, I challenge this administration to provide the same quality and excellence to all of our children and all of our schools when we talk about CFI being number one and number three in the state. I think the challenge is that we have many, many more students in our traditional programs that need that same level of excellence. And I certainly challenge this administration to continue to drive that excellence. Not only a challenge, but actually a mandate so that all of our children have that same level that they're receiving in CFI. Jolene, thank you. I know I gave you a hard time, but I do appreciate the work you're doing, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. We certainly hope that Mr. Manning's daughter has better luck next year with the lottery. I also want to thank you, David, for allowing us to be here tonight at your school. And I'm very excited about what is happening with STEMs. And it would be great to see maybe the possibility of a STEM curriculum moving down to the middle school level. I think that's sort of maybe the next phase as we look at- I think that's sort of maybe the next phase, as we look at doing things and being ahead of the curve, because I think obviously that is where the trend tends to be going. I want to say also a special thanks to Mr. Davis and his predecessors for receiving the outstanding recognition from his peers and Association of Business officials. Sort of said that and did that as a part of just a lot of presentations, but to note that our district is the only district in South Carolina that has a double-A rating is a big deal. I won't say what Vice President Biden said, I'll just say it's a big deal. And it's because it's such a big deal, I'm very excited that we have now the kind of clout and credibility in the financial industry that recognizes the prudent, sound fiscal management that has occurred in this district, not just in the recent past, but for the past twenty-five years. I want a special part to you. I had the opportunity on last week with Dr. Broschu to visit a couple of schools. I was very excited. Got a chance to start off the morning on the twenty-third out at Westwood High School with Mr. Schmidt, and it was very exciting to be there and to be a part of that and to see the enthusiasm and for what the work that they're doing there. Visited a number of other schools after that, total of about eight or nine schools over the course of two days. Goal is to visit the other schools in the next week or so. But it's very exciting to see that schools got off to a very good start, minimal disruption. And the most impressive thing about what goes on in our schools, and whether they're using Chrome notebooks or pen and paper, the most exciting thing for me was to see that students were on task the first day, the first hour of school, most important, regardless of what instrument they were using to be on task. And because of that, I think it represents, Ms. Manning, the level of education that the district expects to achieve, and our job is to continue to support them as they strive to reach those goals and objectives. So thank you very much, Dr. Broschu and your entire staff, for the excellent job you're doing, particularly as we are dealing with a major shift or a shifting demographic population in our northeast community. And so our challenge remains to be able to retain those students and to achieve at high levels, given the dynamics that we are faced with now, that we probably weren't faced